Rule call, please.
Absen.
Lori.
Shemansky.
Here.
Addy.
Bozy.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Here. Dorian's or Bonnie's excused. She, okay. Um, approval or amendments to the agenda?
I make the motion that we accept the newest version of the agenda.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes from December twenty first, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, a motion to approve last meeting. Rule call, please.
Shemansky?
Yes.
Bozy?
Yes.
Bynum?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, approved. Zoning Board preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section twenty-seven point zero five of ordinance number one twenty-six. There are five members on the ZBA, four of whom are present tonight. At least three members vote, must vote affirmatively for a motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When a public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of a particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within thirty days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. All right, so we're gonna open up new business. We're gonna start with Jay ZBA two thousand dash two thousand twenty-two dash zero one six. At the mini storage, representative, come up, state your case, please. Uh, case. Say your name and address, please.
Do you guys need copies?
We have them.
My name is Paul Moskad. I'm the owner of Corkat Mini Storage at three, four, eight, six point Trumbull, I believe. I apologize, I might have the address wrong. I have three items on for variance tonight. I have, I'm asking for a second apartment above our retail space. We have one currently. We're looking for a second one. The space is open and vacant. There's no other use for it. We're hoping to add that to help the township with some new residential housing and do the housing shortage we have in the area. The second item is a lot coverage issue. We're trying to expand the mini storage to the lack of storage and to keep some of our rentals in the community. We're trying to get to a thirty-six percent lot coverage issue. Thirty-five is the maximum allowed, so with the building expansion, we're looking for an extra percent allowed. The last thing we're looking for is a sideline setback with the buildings, the way they, all the rest of the buildings are laid out on the property to match the property lines with the building layouts. We have abutting a residential requirements are fifty. We're looking for a ten-foot offset to match the rest of the property lines in the buildings. I don't know if I have anything else to say, but you guys have any questions for me?
Not yet, Paul, thank you.
Okay.
Did he, you did your address and everything, right, Paul? All right. Hold tight right there, Paul. Um, I have a seat.
Thank you.
Before we say anything, I'm gonna open this up to public comments regarding this issue. Anyone wish to speak for or against this issue? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. So everyone understand the three items there in front of us? Let's address one at a time. The apartment first. Oh, hang on a second. Do we have letters? I'm sorry. Hang on. I thought we did not. Oh, yes, we do. I'm sorry. I opposed. Hang on a second.
That was part of the newest revision.
Yeah, but I need to open up that for public comment. I'm sorry, we do have a letter. And... I am out of order here.
I have them right here if you want them. We got them.
I don't have it in the main packet.
Here. You wanna read them?
Yeah. See, you don't have your, you know what I mean? Your packet's not with letters. Sorry. That's Aqua Lounge. It should be just the one. I saw the one on my phone. I read it on my phone.
Alrighty, so we do have a letter from Michael Huren. Sorry if I said that wrong. It says, zoning board members of appeals. I am a property owner at three, five, two, three Fruit Street. Please accept this letter of concern regarding the non-use variance requested by Cordis Brothers Trucking and Excavating for the mini warehouse expansion from M twenty-nine to Fruit Street. The Fruit Street side is along my property line. I am asking members not to approve this request for various reasons listed below. I will go to reason number two. A non-use variance requires the owner must show a practical difficulty exists on the property. The property was recently purchased.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay. The property was recently purchased after being surveyed. The owner was aware of the lot dimensions. There is room on the lot for additional mini warehouse buildings, just not as many as he would like to place on the property. This alone is not a practical difficulty. Reducing the side yard setback would place the storage buildings within inches of ten feet between the storage building and the garage on my lot. This is my strongest concern. The ordinance requiring fifty feet from a residential lot is for a reason. No one can guarantee what can or will be stored in the storage buildings. Ten feet will not leave enough room for fire response if needed and will certainly extend to my garage and home quickly should the situation arise. I have inquired with the fire chief, George Rose. That statement, I can't say. Ten feet is not adequate next to a residential lot. The purpose and spirit of Clay's zoning ordinance is to guide and regulate the appropriate use or development of all land in a manner which will promote and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. Granting this variance would not, one, be in harmony with the spirit of the ordinance, two, allow public safety and welfare to be secured, three, allow substantial justice to be done. Eliminating building H and K will solve the fifty-foot setback in the variance request for a larger footprint of just over thirty-six percent instead of the, sorry, of the thirty percent, thirty-five percent allowed by the ordinance. For these reasons, I respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals deny this request. And this is by Michael Huren. And this is from the fire chief? But that's not to us.
This is from our fire chief, but it is directed towards... Mr. Huren. This is not...
I don't think it's towards this way.
Yeah, this is not gonna...
Yeah.
I don't have any other letters. I read those two. Again, I'm sorry. I'll close public comment after that. Okay. So we have... Paul, come back up. So we have existing dwelling over top of the Pryor's building. He has another unit that's not done at all, right?
Correct.
That is available for... You guys just purchased this? You're looking just to occupy that, that space? It's not for your retail, so you're looking to rent it out?
Just finished the building, yep.
I have a couple of questions about that. So I know that addition is probably within ten years.
Well...
So, um, was there a ZBA grant or...
Yeah.
Back then? Because... Or not? Because that's the, because if it were granted for it and already labeled or spelled out for two units up there, that variance stays with the property and not the owner.
All right, hold on one second. Paul, stay right there. I'll just slide over. Gary? Gary's our building official, so...
The initial addition was put on that building. That building right now is white box. It's, it's a wide open space. I think it may have been something for future consideration, but nothing that was, that I could find that was brought to the board to make that a dwelling unit.
On the building permits or anything? I mean, do you recall how old that was by chance?
I, I don't often.
Yeah, okay. I know it was recent. Well, recent ten years, fifteen years. Okay. I don't recall that. I've been here a long, I've been here a long time. I don't recall that.
Right, I don't either. That's why I was just asking. Just to clear the air on it, you know?
I wish. There was something like that, but...
I just have a question with respect to how you kind of wrote out your factors.
Okay.
So you put number for the unique situation, you put non-applicable. Do you still think it's not applicable that you don't have a unique situation with respect to the apartment?
No, I guess you're, you're right. That is kind of a unique situation because we don't have a real use for it besides the residential space.
Okay, and you put the same thing for factor number three for not self-created. Do you have like any explanation?
I didn't, I purchased it that way, so I didn't create the space sitting that way.
So I'm having an issue with a, it says too attached for, you know, can only have one. It's the same building. It's, they're right next to each other. One's a suspension lower than the other. I mean, they're, they're gonna be separated. They have, you know, they'll have to meet, I'm sure, a bunch of different codes, you know what I mean? Fire stopping and different stuff that they'll have to work out.
Yeah, it's definitely separated.
But I don't, it's got a nice view. I'd hate to see it wasted.
I don't think he has any use for it.
Well, that's...
Well, I think the intention when it was built...
The intention was for that.
Because I know Mr. Pryor used to live upstairs before he had deceased on the one that's completed. And I think that that, they thought farther down the road that when, when this day comes or came or is here now, that that would be the intention to it because it only made sense that, like Gary had said, that they white boxed it. So whoever designed it, they ever do with it, one bedroom, two bedroom, you know, studio, who knows, you know what I mean? But I don't think it would be intentional forever for a commercial retail spot, you know?
Right.
So let's, I mean, we're gonna do one at a time here. It is a unique situation because that, not often I allow, you know what I mean? It's, it's...
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to see for that.
She doesn't like they put any on that. But regardless, I mean, he did, it is purchase, you know, it's a blank envelope up there, you know? I'm not opposed to that second. Not any issue for him on that. I walked it today. I, I was, see the potential there. I like how everything is separated. No one can, no one goes to each other. They're not using the same utilities per se, you know, furnaces and stuff, so... I can't make a motion, guys.
I know.
I'll make a motion to accept the variance on the second apartment over the commercial building based on the unique situation of the building.
What's the practical difficulty? Oh, sorry.
Say the practical difficulty.
Practical difficulty of the characteristics of the, uh, the building and the lot.
Everything's pre-existing, you know?
I also believe if, you know, with that practical, if they were both the same bubble, I think it'd be a little easier to join and make one gigantic one, but it's not, so reconstructing right now.
There's a roof on the other one, so...
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll make that second.
We have a motion and a second.
Just write it as.
Let's do roll call on this one. This one.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Bynum?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that issue is handled. All right, so now we're gonna go to, we'll go to the setback. He's asking for a forty-foot yard setback variance. Where fifty is required, butted up to residential. So the, if I walk that property today, all the buildings are in line. They're ten feet from the property up front. It does abut to a garage that is really close to the property line as well.
It's like a foot off, and the one part is, goes onto the property line, the other building.
Correct, but with the, with the fence that's put on the property line, it's gonna look the exact same as the front of the property.
Oh, yeah, no.
Have the exact same, you know, if you look at it, the existing buildings up front.
Well, this was...
Existing, or this, it's, he hasn't changed anything except when he butts up to that residential. It, it, it changes things.
Changes the ordinance, the three sentence ordinance.
Well, this was, this was granted at one point, you know, the way it is sitting now with the, with the ten-yard setback on the one side and the twenty-two or twenty-six foot set on the other side. So that's... And this is done basically at the same time the ordinance is, the, what, ninety-seven or ninety-eight?
I'm not sure.
I think these were built in ninety-seven. Uh, uh, what, is that what, you know?
They started then, yeah.
Yeah, ninety-seven. Ninety-seven, and, and if you look at the first version of our ordinances, that came in right about the same time. So this had to have gone through planning or ZBA at one point. I caught, I, I caught, I talked to Tom today and I asked him if, you know, if, if that were the case, and he goes, he don't remember because his dad did everything. You know, because they were still working, you know?
Right.
And, uh, um, he doesn't remember, you know?
There will be no doors on that side. All doors will be facing the interior of the property.
It'd be just like the, what's there now, yeah.
Exact same thing, yep.
And, and we're granting him or them an, the variance if we grant it. It still has to go in front of planning. It still has other things. We can't put, you know, stipulations and, and I know Chief Rose has some concerns that planning can, can deal with that. That's not our concern.
Right.
Chief Rose wrote a nice letter to the residential neighbor, and he'll have some concerns that he can address during planning. We are just here to either grant the variance for the forty-foot or not.
Yeah, I agree with it. In line, and I think recently we've, on the island, on, um, the marina, it was in line, you know, variance on the lot, on the, on a lot line. We kind of agreed that since it was built that way, we, they could extend their building that way. It's kind of a similar situation. The other thing was, um... We're, we're talking about just one, one, one garage, really.
Correct.
And I think how it was explained to me, this site over here is, you know, it's not really considered residential, but...
What is that? That, to the, to the west?
And, and H, so it's mobile home park? So I think it's a different zoning requirement.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they'll have, yeah, that'd be something different.
It would be basically the same situation, right? Other than the zoning, I mean, you're, you're close there, but I like it that it's all in line and the, that's what I was thinking. The, uh...
Characteristics the same.
The, uh, property, I mean, what else are you gonna do with that property?
I was pleasantly surprised when I went there today and I saw everything is already done with this. And I didn't even, fifty years, I haven't even been back to this section, went back there, and it's all the same. He's just gonna, and that's why I appreciated that he's not going closer or not doing, you know? He's making it all uniform, I guess. And again, planning commission has, you know, what, what they want.
Yep, it goes.
Yeah, we're just basically...
George has his concerns, and again, you know, that, that, that can be handled with the building department and, and planning. Right now, it's, the first step is, are we gonna allow that forty-foot?
Well, I would, like I said, you know, like I said, it was approved one time before with this, you know, and I don't, uh... I have a hard time trying to deny it because it's already been approved one time. And they're, and they're just doing the, just extending and following through the rest of the way.
I feel like we need a record of that before we can rely on it.
Well, I'm not saying we rely on it. I'm just saying you know it was approved because they would never have been built.
Well, I can't say never right now.
Well... Right.
Or, or...
Well, it's really...
Any kind of record of it?
It's really the only...
Do you recall any, anything here?
It's because of this one house.
Nothing on file, nothing?
This property that butts up to the...
Well, that's not the issue, is this?
Went up to that point and has as far as they went, or perhaps potential issues. And I know, I know you bought some more property. Was that the property back there that was recently purchased?
What, what do you mean?
The initial lot, did it go all the way to...
Yeah. Yeah, are you talking about the combination? Is that what you're referring to?
Or was it a zoning thing or what was?
The purchase, I purchased the entire parcel from M twenty-nine to Fruit.
Yeah, they had a combined, right?
They were two separate parcels when I originally bought it. I combined, I combined the two parcels.
Combine them for lot coverage?
Correct.
Correct.
So at the time that it was originally done, they were two separate lots. So that left that lot open that was next to residential property?
No, no. The property line was actually in the front by the fence. The, the first parcel was the Pryor building to the fence. There's an easement through the middle for a driveway to the mini storage. The mini storage to Fruit Road was a separate parcel. The combination line was, the parcel lines were at the fence in the front towards M twenty-nine, not on the rear side. It was two, the mini storage owned one, prior plumbing, heating owned the other. I combined them all to one mini storage parcel.
Okay, so this one leads into the next one, so... Go ahead.
Um, what would you say the unique situation is with this variance request?
Because it's abutting a residential parcel on this little sliver of it. I have nothing else I can do with the property back there. Everywhere else is conforming and, and correct setbacks. So uniquely abutting that little piece of residence, residential.
Okay. And how was this not self-created?
I didn't purchase, I didn't put the, well, I guess, how is it not self-created? I didn't make that residential and commercial difference, but that building is also a foot or less off the property line that they're concerned with. I didn't put that there. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Do we have any record on that garage?
We probably do in the building department, but it was, the initial garage build was prior to us being on the computer. So we had to look at...
Hire files.
So I have to go up in the attic on that one?
Okay.
Because it looked at it on to.
Yeah, and at that point in time, that was a totally undeveloped, not fenced, not anything. The addition was a continuance lined up with the existing. You know, the paperwork that was submitted shows setback, but yeah, a survey shows that, you know, that...
So it's a non-conforming, that's a non-conforming garage?
It is for sure.
Okay. Again, I can't make a motion on this one, so I'm here to make us all speak. You good?
Yes.
Can't be here all night, guys. Somebody's gotta...
I'll make a motion to approve the forty-foot side yard setback where variance, where the property abuts residential property based on the fact that it is a very narrow lot, which I think satisfies practical difficulty. In addition to that, the piece of property is abutting on residential, which has different zoning situations. It's not self-created because you did not create those. Substantial justice, I think that you've laid that out in your, um... Attached document for number four of the substantial justice factor. And it is, um, not contrary to the zoning ordinance because it won't undermine the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance.
I'll make a second out.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant the variance, pretty much as written. And a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so that, that motion's carried. So the third one now is lot coverage. So with all these buildings as drawn, correct me if I'm wrong, it will be at thirty-six percent of his lot coverage. Code or ordinance reads thirty-five percent, correct? So this variance is for a one percent lot coverage variance, correct?
Yeah, it touches over that by one point two, you know what I mean, one point two, like thirty-six point, I mean, if you want to get technical, but yes.
Just written as the one, Gary, right?
Just over thirty-six.
Just a little over thirty-six.
Yeah.
Thirty-six and a half minimum or two.
I'm just trying to...
I know, I got you.
And I, I was just reading on the thing here where it was put into the paper. It doesn't say that they're seeking a one percent.
Well, it says, it says thirty-six where thirty-five percent is...
It just says exceeding. It doesn't say how much.
Okay.
That's, that's why I was just...
In the paper, it says that?
Yeah. It just says thirty-five percent. It just says it's exceeding thirty-five percent. It doesn't say how much it is exceeding. So, I mean, we should make sure that it's, it's what you're saying because we don't have... Did you do the coverage to see, Gary, if it is thirty-six point two percent?
It's on his notes.
This is difficult math to, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, I ha, I have it done by a civil engineer. I can, I mean, I'm a hundred percent sure it was just shy, just over thirty-six.
Well, as drawn, I mean, that's, that's thirty, I mean, he would have that. You wouldn't be here if it... Yes, it doesn't say thirty-six percent, but I've read it multiple times.
Thirty-six was...
Right, that's what I'm saying. I've read it multiple times besides...
Just don't know where I saw it.
So he's asking for a one and a half percent, I would say, to cover the point two, point three, point four, point five percent? Is that okay to say, Gary? That's the variance he's asking for. We had two motions so far, two different people. Just saying.
Yeah, I even, it even looks like they shrunk down some of these buildings too.
Personally, I think he could have went bigger, but I, I like the one percent and I'm happy with the one percent and, and he's happy with that and he would have drew it if he needed more. I thought.
I, I don't know.
I think he made everything consistent.
Yeah.
And again, it's, you know, we are just here for the variances. We are not here to make sure that every building, you know, and that's going to be up to the planning and that's going to be up to billing inspector to enforce different things on him. We're, we're only here for the variances. Hence, again, the fire chief is going to have words with you, I'm sure.
I'm a hundred percent, I'm a hundred percent sure of that.
And he has great influence on all of them, so, but not, we are here to just have them keep proceeding with the drawings. All right. So nobody's saying any motion. What would be one percent off of one of these buildings, Paul?
Four thousand, five thousand square feet, something along those lines.
Okay. So it's substantial on that kind of number. So I see where he's asking for that. I figured you had that number in your head.
It'd be like a whole building.
Yeah. That doesn't seem, it didn't seem like a lot when I originally did it. That's why I thought, oh, this is dumb. And I had my engineer change. He's like, he's like, man, that's a lot of building to be. He goes, it doesn't seem like you're asking for a lot.
Right.
But it is a lot when you have potentially eighty thousand, ninety thousand square feet of building in, in total on the parcel.
So I think you know what I'm going to ask. What's the unique situation with this variance?
The unique situation with it is that I'm trying to build out the entire parcel as presented and that little bit is, is, is a big amount. And so it's pushing it over three or four thousand, five thousand square feet. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it, it does, it does, it is adding up to a lot. So I think it's unique that, that little bit on such a large parcel. If that makes any sense.
Unique situation with the particular piece of land?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Uh, and how was this not self-created?
I didn't write the ordinance? I, I. Thirty-five to thirty-six percent just is the layout that matches the rest of the property as I purchased it. We're just trying to match the layout and property line setbacks of everything else. So those were there.
Is there any way you could change your plans to fit the ordinance?
Well, that's. I'll answer that one. Any plan could be changed to fit the ordinance. We wouldn't have ordinances.
Right.
So he's in here asking for forgiveness on an ordinance. So by putting someone on the spot by asking them, how would you change it? You're, if he wanted that, he would have, or he wouldn't be in front of us. He would already have that, that's, you know what I mean? And I would say that for anybody that's coming in front of us.
Right.
That, hey, they want to do something that's against the ordinance and that's why we're here. So I, I mean, just one of those things where it's a, it's a, it's a sticky double edged story right there.
Mm-hmm. I'm just trying to figure out if the whole self-created factor.
I think as far as the self-creation, it, it, it turned out to be that when he, when he was designing the, or he had the design built with uni, you know, everything uniformed, everything exactly as it's already done.
You're blocked in there.
It just so happened that it was over. How about that? That's how I would perceive that. I'm sure he didn't have, say, hey, let's go for one percent, you know, cause no one wants to come in front of us. It just drew out. You know what I mean? I'm just trying to answer that. That's how I perceive it.
I'll make a motion to approve based on the unique situation of the lot, the, butted up between the two, M twenty-nine and Fruit Street and the, the length, the property and the, the units he's trying to build, put in there.
So let's just put it in numbers. We're gonna say, we're gonna allow him because if they change anything on here because of planning, let's just say he is allowed to go up to thirty-six point five percent or thirty-six point two, whatever the final calculation is, we have to put a number like, you know, like say no more than thirty-seven in, in case someone's calculator was off or.
So they don't have to come back.
Cause it says in the paper over thirty-five percent. So let's just say, hey.
Thirty-seven percent.
No more than thirty percent lot coverage, Gary. You okay with that? And if it goes to planning and, but he can't expend any bill?
I think you do the thirty-six point two percent.
Thirty-six point two? Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, that point eight percent is.
It's a huge difference.
That's a huge thing. So.
I just don't want the buildings to get any bigger, but I, but again, understanding that if planning commission says, hey, you gotta do something.
Right. I would say the thirty-six two.
Thirty-six two, Gary? Okay. Please say that in your motion.
To allow for thirty-six point two percent coverage.
Why don't we just add as, as looking at the, as the print provided as well? You know, the layout and design and everything as well, you know, as far as that, it shows all the buildings. It shows all the technical statistical pluses and minuses of everything here.
Right. As, as, as presented to you guys.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah. I mean, the only one that's going to change this now would be planning to change, you know, landscaping, to change entrances, you know what I mean? There might be stuff added too. But, okay, we have a, a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant him a variance of thirty-six point two percent lot coverage or up to thirty-six point two percent lot coverage, basically as drawn. Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes. All right. So motion granted. So you can go to the next phase. I don't know what you got next, but.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
You know, they did, you notice the fire lines are increased by almost three feet.
Yeah, that's what George was saying. He was, he had, you know, some questions on that. So he'll be able to address all that stuff in that letter. The letter was addressed towards, you know, the other homeowner and it was. We, we just need like two minutes for her to write. That was unusual to have three at once. Which one's next, guys?
Which one we got?
Marina. We have letters on Marina. I'm just going to say this before we go. A lot of, a lot of people for the next one on Marina, if you wrote a letter, either we get to read your letter or you speak at the podium versus both. Is that okay? So one or the other, you're saying, you know, your letter, letter would be read or?
No, we share that word letter.
Okay. Well, then definitely you can come up and speak for sure. You guys all here for Aqua Island Marina? This is the, this is the biggest thing.
That makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did the, the three different ones because if one was not granted, the other one is, goes away.
She did answer, but it doesn't make any sense.
She did answer?
Yeah.
Well, she hasn't made one meeting yet. Only fifty people are waiting for us.
This looks so sloppy.
You're good? It'd be different if it was a no. Then it'd be a little bit different. Okay. As that's getting signed, we will go to the second one tonight, and that is at J Z B A two thousand twenty-two, supposed to be dash zero two three at six three one zero Marina Drive. If the representative would come up, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Patrice Balog and I live at sixty-three ten Marina Drive. Oh, and I'm here for a rear set, a request for a rear set. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank here for ten feet instead of forty. Variance to the rear yard setback. There we go.
Twelve or ten?
Ten. Right? No. Oh, shucks. Hold on. Thirteen and a half. There we go. I was listening to the last one.
On that.
Thanks. Sorry. It is thirteen and a half. I looked at my notes.
Anything else you would wish to add?
I never did this before, so I'm not sure. I'm like, I don't know.
You're all right. We'll ask you questions after. Just state whatever you want to state.
I'd just like to keep my boathouse and I need that setback in order to do it. So you know, my neighbors support it. So I'd appreciate it.
Okay. If you just sit in front row, we'll have tons of questions for you in a minute. I'm gonna, we'll open up the public comment right now regarding this issue. But again, please speak, but I don't want to read a letter if you wrote a letter. If not, I'll read the letter as well. So anyone wish to speak on this case, on this issue on Marina Drive? Nobody? Okay. We'll read some letters. We have some letters here.
All righty. So this looks like it's a letter from Jacob Alaman and Colleen Pink. It's an email format. So it says, we, Jacob Alaman and Colleen Pink, both reside at six three one two Marina Drive, are writing in support of our neighbor Patrice that lives at six three one zero Marina Drive. We live directly next to Patrice and our neighbors whose property and water views would be directly affected by the overhang addition to her garage. We have no problems or complaints. It hasn't changed our views of our backyard and canal or canal views. It also doesn't encroach on the property lines given the location of her garage. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jacob Alaman and Colleen Pink. All righty. So I have another letter and I might mess up the last name.
Barone.
What?
Barone.
Barone? Okay. Nick Barone, the owner of Club Capri located on six three four three Dyke Road, fully supports Patrice Balow intent to keep the accessory structure built on her property at six three one zero Marina Drive. Being a neighboring property and business, we have no problem, issues or concerns with the covered accessory structure located on her property. We wish her the best with her endeavors to keep the improvement made to her home. Respectfully, Nick Barone. And that was on November tenth, twenty twenty-two. I think I said that right. Um, this is from Chris Demir. This letter says, dear members, I live at six three oh nine Marina Drive. I would like to state my support in granting Patrice Balow, six three one zero Marina Drive, the rear setback relief that it, that is needed for her gazebo slash accessory structure. Please read this letter into the record to make those in attendance and my neighbors aware of my support of the variance request. Thank you. Chris Demir, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. This is a letter from Jeff Morrow. It says, dear members of the zoning board of appeals, I am writing to support Patrice Balow's application for a variance for the gazebo slash accessory structure on her property at six three one zero Marina Drive. I am directly abutting, I am a directly abutting neighbor at six three oh eight Marina Drive and encourage you to grant the variance setback needed for the structure to remain standing. Kind regards, Jeff Morrow, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Those are all the letters that I have.
Anyone wish to speak? All right. I'm gonna close public comment. Okay. So. Did you pull permit on this?
No, I did not.
And then you were discovered that you didn't and you built it? And then you're coming, is that just getting all the facts?
Correct. Yes. That was, I was at fault for that. It started the whole process. I was thinking way fair and yeah, that was, I was at fault. I didn't know I needed a permit. It's my first, um, like building of anything in my house since I bought it. So actually, yeah, on any house, but yeah, I did not pull a permit. But as soon as I got the notice and had to, I did. You know, I, you know, I'm facing directly M twenty-nine. It's not like, it's not visible. It's not like I'm trying to hide it, of course, you know, but I was wrong. I, for not doing that, yes.
Did you know that it was over the ordinance?
No. Actually, I ba, I did research. I actually didn't think I had to pull a permit for what I was doing.
Not the permit, the ordinance.
Yeah, I did not know because it didn't exist online when I looked it up. So I went by this that I guess no longer exists to meet these requirements for an accessory structure. But that part, that, am I answering your question?
No, I mean, the waterway, the ordinance away from the waterway setback.
Yeah, it didn't say forty feet at the time online. Is that, that did not show online at all.
What about the property makes it difficult to, or unnecessarily burdensome to conform to the ordinance?
Oh, where my davit's located and the deck that's already existing. It's hard to take a boat or a jet ski out of the water and use this as a boathouse or anything, you know, at the same time. It, I couldn't use it, the davit, I couldn't store anything under it anywhere else, I guess.
Okay. And is there anything about the land that's unique or no?
Well, just it's already, the davit's already where it's at. So it makes it unique to use it in limited space. I don't have any other outdoor storage or anything. So.
What does the davit have to do with this?
Because I can take the jet ski out and then store it underneath of it. It's like directly in front of it.
That would reach that.
Oh, yeah. My davit arm is exactly to the front to where then I can.
Oh, it's really, the structure's closed.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
I mean, I've, I looked at it.
Oh, good.
So.
I love it. Sorry. I know. And I apologize because I did go by this and I don't know.
Well, I know. I mean.
Yeah, I know.
The property is pretty square and there's, there's really no unique or.
Well, you know, all these garages, look at all the other, uh, properties that all along there, all those are all. Well, you know, all these garages, look at all the other properties that, all along there, all those are all, you know, pushed up to about fifteen or twenty foot.
The garage is already there. It's the commonest overhead.
No, I know, and all of them. I mean, if you look at what consisted in the neighborhood, you know, when you go down and you look to your right and you look to your left.
Right, but they're all, they're all. They're all illegally built, so.
Right. Built before the ordinance was changed.
And I have pictures, yeah.
And then just.
We already made someone take it down.
Right.
Same thing, same road, same thing. Gary, did that ever get taken down? Same thing. So... I was for her, and for to have these. The problem with having it without a building permit and asking for forgiveness is there's nothing seen. I mean, I saw the construction part of it, so it's easy to, to bring it up to code, or if it is code. I'm not here to, to say it is or isn't. But we do have the codes for a reason, you know, and if, if everybody just throws up a shed, or throws up a fence, or throws up something, and our firemen can't get back to it, or that collapses on one of our firemen, it doesn't end well for all of us. It wouldn't have been such an issue, but you built it without.
I, I know. I did not think I needed one. I know, and I apologize, I know.
I get it, but so did your neighbors, you know.
I didn't know that. I don't know that story, sorry.
It's, it's a lot easier to ask for something, you know, your, your neighbors do have it. I see it. I went down there, went in the house, went. I grew up on that road. I know exactly what the road is. It's a great, and I said this before on the last meeting. I know you guys entertain. You have a great canal. You have a great view, you know, Myers Capri, the boat traffic. I love it.
It is fun.
Unfortunately, it's, there's no difference between any of the other waterfront properties. And you guys are making it unique, I get it, but you can't do it without a permit, and then come ask for forgiveness for us. That's, that's what I'm seeing. I, I was more perturbed that it's even in front of us. It shouldn't even be here. We shouldn't even listen to this. You know what I mean? It should be, tear it down and then come ask to build it versus give it permission that's already done. I seen it, I mean, it's, you know, again, I'm not gonna critique the construction part of it, but it, but it's not one of those structures that... It's cool, and I see the point, and I'm not saying it, I'm just more, I just wish it wasn't for us to say, "Yeah, go ahead," and then, you know, then the neighbor that we told to tear down, oops, sorry, was it maybe one person voted for or against it. I'm pretty consistent. And I was the only one. Everyone else voted to tear that building down, and I'm the one that said, "Hey, you know, maybe she didn't understand me," you know what I mean? I get it, but they have two of them in the same, you know, year and a half?
I didn't know that neighbor. I mean, I know, I mean, I'm getting confused about it. I made a mistake. I'm sorry, but, yeah.
To me, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm just preaching, I guess, in a sense, but we can't change. We can't go against, you know what I mean? It just, well, things where it's, it's not even, you know, it's easier to ask for permission than it is ask forgiveness, and this stuff. It really is. It, it, it does make a difference to, to all the rules, all the ordinances. I mean, they're there for a reason. We're only here to break them. But you broke all of them. You broke, you know, the...
I, I didn't know I was, I know, I know, I know, it doesn't ignore.
But whoever built it knew. That's the key. If he's a licensed builder, he knew, or she.
I, I.
If you built it yourself, then you're.
We had the conversation. I read online. I didn't think I needed, and I, I was wrong.
What I'm saying is you had someone that knew what they were doing help you, and that was wrong. He, he or she knows better than that.
I know, and I defended my research. That was wrong.
No one's perfect. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that I had a real hard time granting permission for this one, when we just had one tore down however long ago. Granted, take it down, come back in for ZBA, ask for permission. Might be a little different scenario. But I think consistency is a little bit.
Even as a boathouse, it can't be granted?
It's not a boathouse.
It'd be for storage. No, yeah, but I can store boats in it, and that's the definition of a boathouse. A boathouse is a small building that is, excuse me?
By water?
Yes.
You can drive a boat into that.
No, you don't have to. A boathouse does not have to be driven into. A boathouse can exist not being in water. It can be close to water or near water. I have definitions. If you'd like them.
Yeah, read it, please.
Sure.
Could you, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I'll try to without taking it. Britannia says, "A boathouse is a small building that is used for storing boats near a river or lake." And then this one I printed really small, so bear with me here. This one just says, "A boathouse is a building especially designed for the storage of boats, normally smaller craft or sports and leisure use," you know, things like that. That is from Wikipedia and Britannia. And also, I want to add, it also provides sun shade, like, the whole thing started, we were fishing, my father, a couple people. They're standing under my little garage to get out of the sun. I had no shade back there either. We like to fish, we like to do all that stuff. Look on Wayfair. I'm gonna buy a little tinted thing to get us out of the sun. This whole thing turned into a big hoopla with no intention of needing a building permit or being here, okay? But we, yeah, I know, and now it is what it is, and I love it, and I would really like if you guys would grant that variance. Put a lot of hard work into it, too, sorry.
Well, I saw, I know.
I love it. And I can use my davit.
My definition of boathouse and your definition might be a little different.
I didn't write this.
But that's Wikipedia. What is our definition? Gary, would you like to speak our, our definition?
Well, I could go get our definition.
I have it right here, but.
Oh, do you? Oh, I didn't know there was multiple. I, sorry.
I mean, there's a basic definition, but there's our ordinance of the boathouse. And I, I'm really sure that somebody would have fought if we could put a garage right on the water and not be able to drive a boat directly into it, and not on a trailer, I mean, on the water.
Right.
Is the definition of our mine, this ordinance boathouse.
Right.
Okay? Totally agree. You can store a boathouse as to store a boat, but I think in the ordinance. You guys, anyone correct me if I'm wrong?
I wouldn't want to block my neighbor's view like that, though, either, so I wouldn't want to put all walls up. My, my structure right now does not block anything. I've got pictures from down the road across it. The other two stick out way more than mine blends in.
One's right on the water. I saw, I saw all that. But I'm not saying it doesn't look cool, and it wouldn't be fun, but.
And it's practical, though. It keeps us out of the sun. It keeps us, you know, and it stores boats. It has many, you know, functions. It's, what, what's the term for it? I don't know. I called it a gazebo, accessory structure. Now it's a boathouse in sun shade, architectural sun shade. I mean, I can go on and on. Then it's storage. I can put all my furniture under there, you know, in the winter and stuff, so that got ruined because I didn't have anything last year, but we won't go there. But it's up to you guys, I guess.
Gary, would you like to add anything to this? I'm not asking any questions. Would you like to add anything to this? Any questions for anybody?
Take the motion to deny the variance based on no justification of the practical difficulty, unique situation.
I'll support it.
Second. That's the way of motion to deny the variance request. And a second, roll call, please.
Nope. Or yes on the motion? Yes to deny.
Closey?
Yes.
Biden?
Yes.
Yes. To go in front of the building again and try to do something, but.
What's my next step?
I don't know what your next step would be. Probably go talk to Gary and see how long you have to take it down.
I gotta take it down. There's no other option.
I, I, I don't know of any other option right now. I can't, I can't speak of an option.
Other than the, on the disclaimer which you read initially.
What do you mean?
On the preface?
Oh, yeah, you can take it, you can go in front of the, the court for sure, within thirty days, and appeal our decision.
I cut all those palettes and put all that jingle up there, too, and I'm like, are you really gonna do this right here, right now?
I wish the best of luck to you, but please don't do anything without. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna jump to the next one. We're gonna write that one before we leave you guys.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna go to, the last one of tonight is JZBA two thousand twenty-two dash zero-two-four at, it's on Aqua Isle, seven-three-two-zero Aqua Isles. Please state your name and address, please.
Eric Hyder, four-four-zero-four-five Grasset Polyart, representing the owners of the property. We are asking for a twelve-foot rear yard setback to build a rear yard open covered porch. Why we're doing that is the, there wasn't an existing, which I have pictures on, an existing covered porch that was attached to the building, or the house. It was kind of structurally unsound. It was made of metal and canopy. So we, the owners removed that, and we want to build a new one that's kind of more permanent, that kind of blends in with the house itself. The existing house is fifty-five feet, right on the rear yard setback. So that's kind of a practical difficulty, because it doesn't give the, the property owner any view to expand the property in any way. So this is an open porch, so it's not going to really block the neighbor's view. The house on the left, seven-three-two-eight, is in line with this house, so the view on a forty-five with the water view rights is not gonna block that view, because this porch is gonna be in the middle of the house. The house on the right, seven-three-one-four, the house is set back, so that's not gonna block their view on a forty-five. I do have pictures of the existing, if I can make it.
Sure.
Of the original structure that was there. That comes out fourteen feet from the original. We are only coming in twelve feet, so it's not as extreme as that one. Here is also a picture of what the open concept would, would be, which would not kind of block a lot of neighbors' view of the water. And here is a, a diagonal view of the property where it was not up to the view of the neighbor's property. I did read the correspondence. The one on the left, seven-three-two-eight, is for it, but the one on the right is against it, and we did read all the correspondence that are not for it, so. So we're asking for a non-self-created issue, because there was already an existing structure there. We removed it to build a new one that's, again, nicer than what, what is there.
Hold on one second, let this pass through.
And this will be only an open covered porch. It will not be a clubhouse, as, as somebody said, or in a closed structure, or visibility to obstructions.
Okay, if, you would just step aside for a second? I'm gonna open up the public comment. I have a couple letters to read. If you guys wish to speak, I'd rather you speak than read a letter. If, if not, we'll open it up to speakers first. Come on up.
I just have one question.
No, just come up here, state your name, and then I'll answer.
I just have one question. The, um...
Please, sir, just state your name and address first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My name's Tom Jordy, and I live at seventy-three-oh-five Aqua Isle, across the street. But my, my, I just have a question here. I did not know, there was a previous structure there?
Yeah, it was a birdcage, like a birdcage with a...
Was it like, like a pace setter awning?
No.
Oh, no, it was a, it was a...
It had, it had, it had sides, and it did have a framework with probably a canvas roof.
When I purchased the, the home, there was no canvas or vinyl, you know, it was probably thrown away. But it was, the, the birdcage or the shell of it was still there, and we took it down that summer because it didn't look nice.
Right, okay.
So what we're building is within that boundary.
Right, no, I didn't, I, I, yeah, I just didn't know. I, I never realized that there was a previous.
And you're, and you're, you're across the street, right?
Did you write a letter?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to see what the previous structure looked like. I, I, I was unaware that there was something there prior.
Yeah, I don't think that, any of that was in here. But would you?
Okay, I see.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't discover that there was some.
So are you for or against it, then?
What's that?
Are you for or against it?
Well, I'd like to move forward with this a little bit first, and then, I, I did write a letter stating that I was against this.
Could you read your letter?
Yeah, yeah, hang on, hang on.
Are you, you're Thomas, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I had a couple of issues with it. One of them was just being setting precedent, precedence with this setback issue as far as extending these to the waterline, okay? I mean, we have a fifty-five-foot setback ordinance now from the waterline to the house, so now we're pushing that to forty-three feet.
In his case, he's asking for that, yeah.
Exactly. So along those backyards there, and I know, I know, as Aqua Isle goes out and those houses get closer to the water, I think those setbacks change.
Are you opposed to anything in your backyard, oppose, or?
No, I'm not.
Like a temporary gazebo?
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. So, and then I did have another concern in here, too, if you, I mean, I can read the letter, or I can talk, too, so. I don't, are you permanent, you don't live in that home, do you?
That doesn't, that doesn't matter right now, so.
No, I'll answer. It's a, it's a, it's a weekend house.
It's a weekend home, okay.
And it's taken care of very well.
Right, no, oh, no, I have no, I have no question about that.
And I let a, a friend use my boatlift, because I got no boat to put in there.
Right.
Rival.
Okay.
So I'm just addressing his questions, and it's not a party house, and we do have one poker run a year. But we block up thirty percent of our canal.
We do. It's for a couple hours.
It's for a couple hours.
No, 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 I understand. I, I don't live, I, I don't, I'm, I'm across the street, so I just, I had to, I had to address, right, I, you know, I had to address a couple times issues with parking and things like that, and, and I, we do have a lot of neighbors that keep a watch on the neighborhood and stuff like that, and everybody kind of.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, everybody kind of keeps an eye. So I just, I was just trying to clarify a couple things. I wasn't real sure. I didn't know that there was an existing structure there. I wasn't real sure if you actually lived in the home, or if it was a summer, weekend home for you through the summer. So, and then, you know, I just, from talking with neighbors, I've had, people say things to me as far as letting people use the boat space and wall space and things like that, and which kind of creates an issue when you're not there, because there's no access to the house, so they're walking through side yards.
So, so that's where I'm at. I know, but, but we're, they're, they're asking for a covered, covered porch. There's, I went down there, there's multiple people that have fences, six-foot fences that are against this. They have sheds that are right up to the house. They have a gazebo in the backyard that's blocking someone's view. That's probably not supposed to be there either. And then we have people that are, you know, a bunch of, you guys are like fighting like little kids in the, in the neighborhood. It's one of those things where they're asking for a covered porch. They're doing it the right way. They didn't come, you know, they're not asking for forgiveness.
Sure.
So are you for it or against the, that, and that's what I'm after? Are you for the, the covered porch?
You know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna discuss that with my wife for a second before I give you an answer on that. I mean, I initially wrote this.
I'm not gonna read your letter, then, because you're here right now speaking right now or not?
You don't need to read mine.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. All right, anyone? Perfect, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this? Come on up. Do you have a letter, ma'am?
Yes, I do.
Which one is it?
I live next door at seven three one four Karen.
Would you like to read your letter, or would you like to speak? I only want to do one.
You can read the letter.
Okay. Yep.
Are you Karen Chalou?
I am.
Okay, am I saying it right?
Pardon?
Am I saying your last name right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll read it for you.
You want to read it, or do you want us to read it?
I can read it.
Okay. I have a tendency to stutter, so.
Yeah.
I like the cursive.
I've been a primary resident owner for thirty-some years now at seven three one four Aqua Isle Drive, next door to the owner at seven three twenty Aqua Isle Drive, who is seeking the new variance. I'm thankful that I have an unobstructive view of looking down my canal without having all the structures and buildings that are starting to cover every inch of everyone's property. The passing of this new variance just opens up more and more structures in the future. First, all the fences, now structures on every inch of every homeowner's property. I am one hundred percent against the passing of a new variance. I am definitely planning to attend the meeting on Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Karen Chalou.
Thank you, Karen. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You have a boathouse that's covered, or you have a covered well. Would you be opposed for them putting a cover well on, on that?
It's open on the sides.
But what I'm saying to you is, you, you wrote in your letter all the buildings and stuff like that, and you have it, you've had it for thirty years. Did, did you take in consideration that you're blocking someone else's view, ten houses down, maybe?
No, because it's, um, open. We were told that we can't enclose it.
I don't think she realizes this is an open porch.
Yeah, the, your pillars on your boathouse are like the porch.
What I'm saying is, this porch is still open. You'll be able to go through it, you'll see through it. And I don't think from your house that you're gonna see anything, you might not even see the posts from where your house is.
What about the sheds by the trees they mentioned?
I don't, I didn't see any shed on their property.
They mentioned in their letter that by some trees, tall trees, they're gonna.
See, to me, you can't see through those arborvities right now, but the, the porch isn't gonna obstruct any of your view, and your view isn't at forty-five percent. Your view is straight out the property line right now. I'm just saying, it's kind of, you don't want them to have it, but you have it type deal. It's the same thing as someone doesn't want the porch, but they have a gazebo in their backyard. Someone has a fence, but they don't want to see a porch. I get it, you've been down there for thirty years, so have I, I've driven down past your boat for thirty-some years, too. It's just one of those things where, it's, I don't know, it's kind of hard to, it's, it's kind of disheartening that, you know, you're opposed to something you have, and you're not allowing your neighbor to have it. They could totally put a boat house over their well right now, and they're not. They're asking for a porch.
And, and.
Hang on, I'm not, you guys, I don't, do you know what I mean? And I'm trying to save the neighborhood. It's a beautiful house, beautiful neighborhood. I don't care if they're, it's their fifth house. I do care if they, you know, throw big parties, but it's in the same token. By spreading rumors, by denying one person because they don't have their full time, I don't see where that's, you know, neighborly. By opposing something and you having it is kind of mean.
Mean?
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't.
I've never had any problems.
I, I know, but you, you have a covered well.
I have this come to my house and, you know, a letter, and, um, we've been dealing with these fenced-in porches now and every, and, um.
And, and people that wrote letters have, have those fences.
And now you're zooming in on my boat well. And it's not, it's not, it's not covered.
No, but you can cover it now. You, you could.
Well, you can make sure I will then.
No, but they could, too, is what I'm saying.
Fine.
I, I know, but by you saying, but, but, but reading your letter saying that it obstructs the view down, down the, down the chan, or the, down the canal.
It's mostly the variance. It's okay for them, so then the people next door are gonna do their variance. And then, um, what, what are they gonna put on theirs? It's getting so tight in the whole neighborhood. It's like, what crime did I commit that, um, we're all getting in cells now? And, um, between the fences and the structures and whatever.
I understand, and I totally agree with you on, on cer- certain things. I guess I was just, when I went out to the property today and and went because of your letter, and you're directly next to them, and I wanted to see what, what it impacted. And then I, and then I saw your covered well with a boat in it, they can't see through that. I'm just, it's just one of those things where it struck me differently. Do you know what I mean? You, you say that you're opposed to all of it, but you, you have it. Your neighbor has a covered, your neighbor to your right has a covered porch, beautiful looking.
I will, okay. I'll cover my boat.
No, 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 I don't mean it, to say that, but what I'm saying is.
If that's what this is coming down to, and I'll get fences for all the damn dogs and whatever. I do not see your point at all.
You don't?
No.
Okay. Is that all?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, we have a couple of letters.
Well, you know, I want to make a comment on these letters.
On the letters?
Yeah.
If they're, if they're all like repeats, we're gonna read it once and then.
Well, I mean, just saying is, I'm not a, a signature expert, but it's just, uh, everything looks the same. I have copies if you want to see them.
I mean, I'm not.
The threes are identical. I don't know. I don't have any letter in front of me.
Okay.
Just a coincidence.
It was a, it was a standard letter, standard form letter.
We have it, just for, let's read the names.
Yeah, then I wrote that.
Did you sign the names?
No, 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 the names did sign, but there's a couple of things that I would like to clarify. We, we were under another understanding as to exactly what he was proposing to do. So I hadn't seen the prints. We thought it was a completely enclosed porch that was gonna extend twelve foot up past the house, flying, things like this. This is a sun shade, I think.
Yeah, that's what it basically, it's rather than buying a Costco gazebo that's detached from the house, this is gonna be integrated with the roof line.
Show him the picture.
Our current, our current estimate is called P, so it, it, it's within the same box. And Karen still had, I mean, from her house to the, to the point, it's a hundred and sixty degrees of, of view, right?
So. Let us finish these letters out, and then, um, we'll, we'll ask some questions.
Yeah, no intention of blocking anybody's view.
Okay, so I'm gonna read, um, a letter from Adam Peyton, I think I'm saying that correctly. Resident of seven three oh one Aqua Isle Clay Township, Michigan, four eight zero zero one. Strongly disapprove of this variance being granted based on several reasons. Moving this setback from fifty-five feet to forty-three feet sets precedent for future structures encroaching closer to the water's edge and further blocking the neighbor's view of the water. The owner requesting this variance is not a permanent resident. I'm not gonna read that. It has already created problems with parking and boat owners passing through the side yards to gain access to their boats. In closing, it is my belief that the owner is creating a clubhouse for boat owners occupying his boat well and seawell space. I appreciate your assistance and time in hearing my reasons not to grant the proposed variance, and this is a letter from January ninth, twenty twenty-three. This is the same, um, just so the record is clear, this is the same, um, paragraph in the middle of the, uh, letter from Adam Peyton, and this is from Gregory C. I think it says, I'm gonna butcher this, but C Z O W C L S?
C R O X C.
How do you say it?
Cronz.
Cronz, okay. Gregory Cronz, resident of seven two nine two Aqua Isle Drive, Clay Township, Michigan, four eight zero zero one. And then there is another letter from John Prot, John E. Prot. And his letter is on the Clay Township Notice of Public Hearings, Orienting Board of Appeals Notice. It is dated December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Says Township Board, no objections, thanks in advance. John E. Prot, seven three oh eight Aqua Isle Clay Township.
Can I ask you a question? Any other letters?
Oh, no. I think on John, or.
Hang on one second, Dennis, hang on a second, and we'll, we'll go over it. Anyone else wish, wish, there they are, to speak? We got one, two, three, yeah, you did three. Anyone else wish to speak? I'm gonna close public comment. All right, Dennis, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, um, Tom, you, you said that you were on the assumption that this was gonna be a, an enclosed porch. So you typed up this letter and asked these three people to tell them, saying that it was an enclosed porch?
Yes.
So if they were to say that, now that it is not an enclosed porch, and you've seen the drawings, would you advise them to, to change their mind?
I would advise them to make their own decision based on the real facts.
So the facts that they were given is wrong, that's why.
That was under the wrong assumption also, and I apologize.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Open porch, enclosed porch, uh, isn't it the right of your view on your own property and not your neighbor's view on your rights?
Correct.
So the argument about it's gonna block my view down the canal is wrong because your right is your property, not somebody's.
Right, we know that, we're, that's why we really.
So, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that, that, uh, so if it was a closed porch, or in an addition, it'd be the same, same thing. Like I said, the practical, but, okay, I, I, let me, let me take that back. But it will always be an open, open porch. So by not setting a precedent, you know, we have non-self-created issues because there wasn't an existing covered porch. The existing house is built on the rear yard setback, which, like I said before, it's not really, doesn't give any neighbor or any property on that whole street the ability to expand their house or improve their house, so.
It's not, the ordinance isn't specific per road, so it's not perfect.
Correct.
Okay, so the setbacks are not perfectly written per street. If I can say that politely, you know what I mean? So to, to change it, Marina's got thirty-five, Aqua Isle has fifty, or forty, or what, you know what I mean?
Correct.
That's not how the, they're doing that, okay? That's not how our, our master plan is written, and so it, it comes into a
Case by case.
A balloon, you know, so everyone, you know what I mean, that wants to break that ordinance, comes in front of us, I suppose. I, I just, again, there's a lot of stuff down there, and a lot of, it's, it's a great area, it's a great, great people. I, I, again, I grew up in that sub, so I just don't see an issue with a non-enclosed porch. And that's why I corrected you with either addition with closed or open with two, two posts. If they could ever come up a, a way to levitate the porch, you know, but again, we have the two posts that are falling within that setback. Again, I, my view might be different if it was an addition. Okay, so that's the difference. I would perceive that. And as far as everyone's view, I take that into consideration, you know what I mean, even though it's not their or a, a cost for us to deny because we're blocking someone's view. I, I consider open porches nice. It is, it is nice.
It's a beautiful.
Doing it, doing it the right way. I wish the people before would have done this, and at least asked for permission versus just build it, and then we're the bad guys now. You know what I mean? Um, I wish you would have stayed and, and, and watched this to, to watch the, the different arguments go, um, and the right procedure that you're doing. Unfortunately, it's just, I, I can't explain our ordinance at fifty-five feet. I mean, every house that we build is, there's always something. There is a straight line setback, you guys, it doesn't help you in this case. I, I looked in your backyard. I'd look, I'd look to see if you had any leeway, and you don't. Every house is pretty well in a straight line, which is nice. Some have other things, some don't. I get it. I don't feel that this would be detrimental in any way, shape, or form to that area.
I would agree.
And again, I say that area, you know what I mean? I, I, I think everyone would be pleasantly surprised that it would be nice.
That shed is existing, isn't it?
I didn't see a shed. Uh, what, what shed are we talking about?
Oh.
Okay.
See if we could petition for a small shed.
That's, yeah, yeah, good luck with that. That's, that's, that's a different, I mean, there's a lot of stuff down there. A lot of, a lot of the stuff, you know what I mean, that people have that might not have if they asked permission to have. And again, I, I respect that you're coming in and doing it versus just having somebody throw it up on the weekend, I guess. I can't make a motion, you guys, but I, I don't want to be the only one that speaks either.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful compliment to the property and the area. Now, you see the conceptual picture there, it's, it's, it's really nice.
Are you gonna keep those arborvities? Not, you don't have to say yes or no because of the decision.
Yeah, um, but one neighbor on the other side, he's, he's newer, too, he likes them.
Oh.
We were concerned, like, maybe he, we wouldn't like them.
I'm just, I mean, because those are definitely view killers right there, but I get it. It's privacy, I, I'm not, I'm not, it's not gonna sway my decision, but those are, when I walked out, I'm like, oh.
Yeah.
Regardless, I mean, you know, I'm just not, I'm not gonna nitpick in any way, shape, or form, you know, I'm just saying that's.
Well, you know, the, they did have, uh, that, uh, inadequate, ugly, uh, fourteen-foot one.
I wouldn't consider that like a pre-existing, you know what I mean? I, I get that, I get the point. But I think one that's, I, I don't see that having a full foundation. It's not quite the same as what we're doing so permanently right now. It's not a temporary gazebo, it's not a, you know, certain things that supposed to have, you know, permits as well for, so. I can't make a motion, you guys.
Well, you know, on all the things that you said as far as the different setbacks, as far as different streets and everything else like that, you know, and, you know, the key thing here and practical difficulty is meet the standard requires the variance be related to characters of the property, that's a personal situation that the applicant, you know, so like you were basically stating, as far as all the different setbacks and all the different roads, you know, that we have, the, the bird aisles and Anchor Bay, and, uh, where we, you know, sheds that we've allowed to go right back, and garages and stuff like that, and, um, and it is a various, it, it is a short lot or a small, you know, these lots are all, what is this one? What does it say in here? I thought I saw it on here somewhere. What does it say in here? I thought I saw it on here somewhere. How deep it is?
Should be on the sight plane, on the site.
Yeah. Oh, a hundred and twenty. Yeah, that's, 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 that's a various. You don't have much options, you know? That would probably be the, the practical difficulty is the lot size. You know, as far as having that porch. I don't know. I'm still thinking about how to make this. But if you guys have a better.
So I want to clarify this. On this little sketch that we have, there is a shed by these arborvities. That's not, that's not in any way, shape or form to, for, you know, for this variance.
That is correct.
So that's, might be something for you guys later in the future or something like that. We're always wanting for the
Only the porch?
Just the covered, open patio in the set.
Yes.
Are like plastic sheds allowable on, on the slide?
I'm not sure. Probably not. I mean, it's gotta be ten feet away from the structure, so you, you'll be in trouble no matter what you, you, you're not gonna get on your side here.
Was that um the initial, what's it called? I don't know. Porch, was that there when you bought the home?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask a question, okay?
For Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Gary, um with this setback rule, what's like the intent, like the public safety intent behind it, if there is one?
As far as a setback on that street?
Yeah, that specific street.
Originally, and that's where we go in different streets have different setbacks in R one, R two districts. Where this one, yeah, R two, the builder got those variances to say, let's build these houses closer to the street. Their front yard setback is only fifteen feet. And leave it for that open backyard. That's something that was done during development of that street. In any of the R twos was closer to the street, more open to the water. And just to touch on it, you know, uh, in twenty twenty, uh, we did the unobstructed yard space. We did that ordinance. And that ordinance, and even though, yeah, Supreme Court says your view is straight out, the unobstructed yard space was created to open that up so that people have more of a view. So I think you're right on target. If, if we're talking about a totally enclosed addition, it might be looked at differently than something that you virtually can see through. You know, it's, so how that was created, the answer to your question, uh, that would have been done when the R two was developed.
Okay.
Got an answer on the fly. Yeah, I don't think it, 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 it makes a difference, you know, I mean, it does, there's, as far as obstruction from anybody's view. You know, it's just the whole point of, is, is just basically is that phrase of that setback. You know, and if you look up and down this, you know, that, like you were saying, there's just so many other things that are closer.
I think being in the middle of the house, it minimizes any obstruction from the neighbors. Which, I mean, we do and don't can take that into consideration. But again, if this was an addition, I think we'd be maybe setting precedents, maybe changing the whole lay of the land. And it probably would be a different answer, you know, for some of us. I, I don't know until we vote. I don't know, but open? We're looking at two posts that are, that are in it.
We've allowed two posts before on, on, on a, on an addition that we didn't allow a setback further, but the upper deck was posts were coming down in, into the setback.
I wanna say, I like to make the motion, but I'm just, I just don't have, I'm lost for the words for the, to read the whole things. So if you guys want to chime in.
You mentioned that the lot is narrow, shallow.
It's not shallow, yeah.
It's one of those kind of situations, so that'd probably be a practical difficulty.
Well, then I would say this, approve the, uh grant this motion or variance for the forty-three-foot setback at the let's see, I just on this again.
Is that what that is, a forty-three-foot setback versus a fifty-five?
Yeah. Twelve-foot variance.
That's, that's why I want to make sure we get them.
And that the practical difficulty would be is the, uh, the shallowness of the, the lot. Um, unique situation. You know, the way that it's, like, like you had said, it's, it's squunched in a good twelve feet. It's like centered in the house. You know, so it's, it's, you can't see it from either way from any, any view, basically. It's what's wide open. It's not self-created, you know, they, there wasn't existing on it or on it even though it wasn't like technically a permit in our standards, but it was, there was a porch there. Substantial justice, it's a beautiful design. I mean, I don't think it's gonna take away at all in the, um, in that whole area and just increase other people's property values as well. And um and again, it's still, it's just wide open. I don't think, I just think those two poles is, is, is that much of an obstruction in that rear backyard. And if you want to add to it, I would love to hear it.
Just make sure it's open. Correct. Line says open. And if they ever wanted to enclose it later, they have to come back. Or if the rules or ordinance has changed, you'd have to and again, that's a big difference.
Yeah.
So maintain being open.
Open and closed?
Open. As again.
Open covered patio. It's not a, I mean.
Porch patio, wish everyone a calm.
They don't have that much to get, I mean, it's gonna be within, I don't know, I consider patio on the ground, so.
Yeah.
It's not a deck, it's not, you know.
Right.
They had, they would have to, if there was a deck, they had to come in front of us too, right? Because that's a post in the ground.
In the unobstructed yard space, as long as it's three feet.
Okay, okay, so that's what it is.
It's not considered obstruction of
Okay.
So there you have it.
So is that, would that be two variances? Like, is that unobstruction? Or is it just a setback? I mean, are they violating that one or is it kinda?
What they're, that's why it was cited, basically, because it's a fifty-five minimum setback in that area. But what really comes into play is three point two nine. That talks about the unobstructed yard space.
But you were.
By approving this.
Okay. But if it was enclosed, it would be obstructed and setback, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
Can I amend the motion?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I would just amend the motion, uh, emotion, motion for substantial justice. I don't think that it would confer special privileges denied to others, other properties in the zoning district. And as Gary had mentioned, it is not contrary to the intent of the zoning ordinance, and that would be for number five.
I accept that.
Okay.
But you can't repeat it? We got it on record. So we have a motion to grant this variance, pretty much as drawn, I, I would say, correct? Um, and a second. Uh, roll call, please.
Second. I will, yeah.
Thought that was, I'm sorry. Did you second that?
I amended it, but I didn't second it.
Oh.
But now I'm seconding it.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I'm sorry. I thought that was, you were adding on to it for the second, okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion granted. Our variance granted. Okay. As she's writing that up, we'll go to
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, unfinished business? I don't think we have any. We got that new update on the bylaws. Make sure you get that in your file. Report. Do you guys have nothing that you saw? I didn't see anything. Report from planning commission?
In the Artie's meeting minutes from the, there's some changes coming, one twenty-six?
You got ordinance changes coming?
Update corrections. Correction.
Verbiage. We'll, we'll get a copy of that, right, for ours? Okay. I guess I'm gonna, uh, any others review? No, I don't have anything else to review except that I'm probably gonna talk to Artie and we're gonna need to get a planning commission representative that shows up for our meetings.
Yeah, well, Debbie's gonna be gone for a couple of months.
That is Maureen. I thought it was.
No, that's, she's from the board. Debbie is from the planning.
Don't we, aren't we supposed to have someone from the board that shows up at our meetings too?
And it's supposed to be Maureen, and she says she'll be here from now on. She, whatever.
Okay. I was just want, you know.
She's supposed to be the one.
Yeah, if we have, you know, it was nice to have Joanne at the time, you know what I mean? She always kept us somewhat informed. Okay, that's fine. Uh, public comments? Gary? Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hang on, I'll close public comments. Now you can.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, I gotta go apologize.